Good evening and welcome to the Town of Auburn Planning Board Meeting of November 10th, 2020. Luminaries matter, this is John Regan, Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Wendy Stein-Hilber. Ron Brooks.
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch.
Yeah.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
I think Todd's out. Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner, Adam Menard.
Yeah.
Top Assistant, Rachel Pressley.
Yeah.
And Arlene Coyle is out. This open meeting of the Auburn Planning Board of Tuesday, November 10th, 2020, now called to order at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings and as such, the Governor's ordered suspension of the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting on the town's website allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening by remote participation for the public only, although some members of the Planning Board are physically located in the Selectments Meeting Room in Town Hall. Those members and employees are practicing social distancing in accordance with the Governor's orders. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call 1-312-757-3121 and enter access code 133747477. Or the public can join via computer at thegotomeeting.com/join/133747477. Remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees, and members of the public who participate, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you and please take care to not share your screen. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Under Meeting Materials, all supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Let's go over the ground rules. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in discussion with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. After members have spoken, the Chair will afford the public comment as follows. The Chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the Chair has listed of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. First item on our agenda is an A R, Waltacoza, 255 Prospect Street. Is anyone here representing Waltacoza?
To the Chair, I don't see anybody on the line, but I can give a brief explanation of what the A R is. Mr. Coza is looking to carve off four lots, the buildable lots, off of a larger parcel at 100 Prospect Street. They're all strip the zoning bylaw, 20,000 square feet each with appropriate frontage.
So, does anyone in the Planning Board have any comments? Nicholas Lynch, do you have any comments?
No, I do not.
Wendy Stein-Hilber, if you have joined us, do you have any comments? Ron Brooks?
No comment, John.
Steve Chambers?
Yes, no comments.
So, may I have a motion to approve this A R plan as is?
I'll make a motion, John, it's Ronnie Brooks, I'll make a motion that we approve the plan as it is.
Do you have a second?
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Public hearings is up next. Applicant Auburn Dermatology requesting the site plan approval under Section 3.2.6.6 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw for the construction of a parking lot and pathway at the existing medical office on the property located at 207 Southbury Street, Auburn, Mass., Map 18, Parcel 41. I must recuse myself. Nick, could you please take over?
Yes, thank you, John. So, do we have the applicant present? I think the meeting is already open.
Yes.
Yes, sir. I have Corey from Burton Engineering here. Okay, you can please go ahead and go through your presentation. Sure. Since our last meeting, GTC has went out to the site and conducted soil test bits. This was done on October 29th. Since then, we discovered that we needed to raise our stormwater system a little bit. We did that and we resubmitted the plans on November 5th. Graves Engineering did review these plans and they are okay with our design and our updated stormwater management system in regards to the GTC test bits. We have also updated our plans in regards to the lighting, that is the screen that you're currently seeing up. We have added the bollards alongside the path, as discussed in our last meeting. And we have also performed site distance COGS. Graves Engineering did also mention the COGS on their end. They were okay with the site distance, but we have also sent out to Mr. Adam our site distance plans. I don't know if Adam, if you're able to bring those plans up or not. But there's more than enough room and more than enough site distance to turn either left or right once you leave the site onto Hampton Street. All right, and that is this? Yep. No, go ahead. No, go right ahead. I was just about to say, that's pretty much it on my end. Those are the updates that we did since our last meeting. And we did receive the Graves letter today, November 10th. And they don't have any additional comments. So, it seems to be like it's all okay on their end. All right, thank you. So, I'm going to go to each individual member. Why don't we start with Ron? Do you have any questions?
Sure have.
I guess, can you tell me again, I don't know if I asked last week, what is the length of the walkway from the parking area up on Hampton Street down to where they intend to rent the available?
The length, I could find that out if you give me one second. It is approximately 290 feet.
And it's basically climbing or going up or downhill all the time?
It is essentially going downhill all the time if you're coming from the parking lot, down.
And you said you don't need snow storage because you're not going to be using it in the wintertime?
We do have snow storage planned on site, but this will not be used during the winter months.
And it's got adequate lighting?
Yes, lighting is adequate on site. We have provided the plans.
Thank you. Just across, what months would you utilize this lot?
Dr. Waiters, are you able to give a little bit more information on exactly which months this will be used and not be used?
Hi, it's Dr. Waiters, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's, as soon as the first snowflake hits, we're going to close it and we'll probably open it up April 1st.
And, I, is the brush cleared away on each side of the actual walkway? Is it, how far on each side of the walkway is the brush clear where it's light? There's nothing, there's not vegetation where someone could be hiding or anything like that in there?
About 10 feet, sir.
10 feet on each side?
Yes, sir.
And that's clear to the ground, more or less?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Steve, do you have any questions?
No, they've addressed everything that I requested.
Okay. So, I do have a couple of quick questions. This is Nick Lynch, the vice chair. So, I know that you said you addressed the lighting. The lighting, from what I can see here, is solar, correct? It can be powered by solar? If you give me one second, I will verify that while I bring the plan up. Thank you. I could take a look at that and come back to you if you, while I address your other questions. Sure. So, I'll go to my next question then. So, Dr. Waiters had mentioned that it would be when the first snowflake hits, you know, this is New England, first snowflake hit last week. Just, I'd kind of want to put a date on, can you show any approval on the, you know, as far as when it would be opened and then also take into account, you know, daylight savings time. I drive up on back, I jog myself every day to pick up my younger son from daycare. And so, I went by at about 5:00 today, pitch black. So, no snow on the ground right now, so that's good. But with it being so dark out, it presents some type of safety concern that I would have over there. And then, obviously, with the snow, I'd want to see, you know, some type of date that you would put on for rather than when the snow first snowflake hits. So, something in, I would imagine, late October, but I'll kind of let you guys speak to that part. Dr. Waiters, any comments in regards to putting an exact date on closing of the parking lot?
Well, it's my understanding that those are going to be powered by real electricity, not solar powered.
Okay, good.
So, there should be plenty of, I mean, everyone leaves by 5:00 and you're right, you need the lights on for about an hour from about 4:00 to 5:00. You know, I really hadn't thought about a date. All I know is that, again, when it's covered with snow or ice, I don't want anyone to get hurt.
Yep.
And I can't put a hard date on it.
Maybe we, John, it's Ronnie.
Hi, Ron.
Nick, I'm sorry. Maybe we should put a date of first snowflake or ice or no later than October 31st.
The board could put some kind of condition, so the dates onto the decision.
Thank you, Adam.
The last thing I want is anyone to get hurt. I mean, but if it's 70 degrees and it's in November, you know, it would be nice to use the parking lot. Again, from December to April, a lot of my patients go to Florida anyway and we wouldn't even need them for our patient volume. So, I mean, I can definitely say Jan. 1 to April want to be closed, but it would be nice if it's a warm fall to leave it open with the appropriate lighting.
I think with the appropriate lighting, I mean, so, you know, I would just say, my personal opinion on it is I think that delaying it that, you know, as late as the, you know, the end of November is probably something I would be comfortable with, but this is New England, it does no sooner than that. And my concern would be that, you know, given that it's a gravel pathway, snow removal would be kind of a challenge. And, you know, yes, it has been really nice this past couple, you know, this past week or so, but that's, I think, somewhat of an abnormal to this time of year. But I do think putting a date on there would be appropriate as a condition of approval. Okay. My other question, yeah, go ahead, Ron.
Yeah, I think I'd like to see like, either October 30, yeah, something like October 31st, just to be safe, if we're going to put a date.
My last question I had too was specific to, it seems like you've addressed the part about the safety concerns too and the soap and maintaining it clearly and the electricity running through for the lighting so it wouldn't be solar because it is sort of an overhang over there. So, it might be challenging to get sunlight on there all the time. My other concern was that a gate should be installed so that the parking area can't be closed during those months. So, I'd like to see that as a condition of approval. Would you be amenable to that?
I thought one of the original plans did have one of those yellow swinging gates, so that's no problem.
We have currently two 4-inch yellow plastic bollards with a chain hung between them to not allow any vehicles to go through. So, do we have any public comments? I'm going to ask if we have any other questions from the board. I'm going to start with Ron, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Steve, are you all set?
All set.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make that, okay.
And can I get a second or a second? Steve Chambers, second. Okay, thanks, Steve. And so, at this point, I think we should, you know, with the conditions that we mentioned, specifically putting a date on it, I think we're on agreement that October 31st is sufficient given when it snows. So, I'd like to, do we have a motion for approval based on those conditions?
To the Chair, Doctor, you go. Do a roll call, closing the public hearing first. There was a motion in the second to close the public hearing.
Okay, one more time, Adam.
Nick, I'll make the motion, close the public hearing.
Do you have a second? Steve Chambers, second. And we'll do a roll call. Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
And Nicholas Lynch, as an aye.
Okay.
And so, now can we make a motion to approve based on the conditions we set forth?
Yes.
This is Steve Chambers, I'll make a motion that we approve with a closure date of October 31st and an open date of April 1st, as well as the conditions to make sure it can be closed and the lighting is substantial.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nick Lynch?
Aye.
That is a vote.
Okay.
All right, so, go ahead.
You can hand it back off to John now. I'll get a decision after a visit with you in the next week or so.
I'll turn it back over to Adam. John?
Next up on the agenda is Applicant Eastland Partners Incorporated requests for site plan approval under Section 3.2.2.1, 5.4 of the Auburn Zoning Bylaw for a two-family dwelling on property located at 28/30 Albert Street, Auburn, Mass., Map 65, Parcel 70. Is there anyone here from the applicant? Is there anyone here from Eastland Partners?
I don't see anything, John. I can give a brief update. They are routing up the 40B design. They're scheduled to be in front of ZBA next week, possibly for a decision next week. So, we should have something back on this board after that date.
So, we should have a problem continuing this till the next meeting?
This is Nick, I make that motion.
May I have a second?
This is Nick, I'll second it.
Next on the agenda is Applicant SZLL Realty.
John, can you do a roll call?
Oh, sure, I'm sorry. So, roll call on approving the continuance on Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Next up is Applicant SZLL Realty LLC, a definitive subdivision plan for 13 lots, single-family home development on property located at 178 Hampton Street in 19 Eaton Ave., Map 12, Parcel 120, continued from 10/13/2020. Is there anyone here from the applicant?
Mr. Chairman, this is Donald O'Neil. I'm here on behalf of SZLL Realty in connection with this application. I believe also Joe Graham, the engineer, and Bob O'Neil, the surveyor, I believe, are also on the line. I was expecting to have them on the line and was anticipating that, you know, that Joe Graham would comment on the review that we had received from Graves Engineering on, it is November 4th. They had gone through the plans that we had submitted and came back with their comments, which I believe the board would have received also, you know, late last week. We did receive it, either it was Wednesday or Thursday of last week. And unfortunately, that didn't leave us a whole lot of time to come up with a response to various comments made, but I believe Mr. Graham is here and will do his best in terms of commenting on the report that he had received. And if he's on the line, I would ask him to jump in and proceed with a response to Graves' comments.
Before we move on, I'm not going to waste everybody's time going through this point by point by point. There's enough here on their comments to have you address and then present it to the board or actually give it back to Graves to make sure that you've addressed all the comments. I'm not going to sit here for the next hour going through point by point by point on things that need to be done that are obvious, like sewer lines coming out of the ground. I think we should continue this to the next meeting, which gave you enough time to address the comments, get it back to Graves, and get it back to us.
Well, I mean, if I understand you, that the sentiment that you have there and if that's the board's wish, we can certainly do that. And, you know, our hope would be, I guess, that in responding to Graves, we can try and do that, which you expect, that there would be further direct communication with Graves directly and as opposed to waiting until the next meeting to supply additional information in response to their comments?
Because of the time we can spend to Graves.
That be intent?
Yeah, if we get it soon enough, we can get it to Graves right away. I mean, I wouldn't stop you from calling Graves directly if you needed to have a discussion with them over design, but it needs to be formally submitted to Graves or to the Town Planner, Adam, and then he can get it to Graves. But in the interim, if you wanted to talk to Graves that have added, I mean, I don't have a problem with that. And then you can get things straightened out so all these comments are addressed properly.
We can certainly do that and I guess, one thing that, the last go around that we had with Graves, it did take, you know, quite a while to get a response back from them. So, you know, we will do our best to respond, I guess, and get it back to you and then back to Graves. And hopefully, the turnaround time, I guess, basically on the comments that come back from us, you know, would be quick enough so that hopefully we could, you know, get information, get it to Graves, get it back with a response, you know, in sufficient time that we would be able to, you know, move ahead with the board. And I understand that everyone needs time to review the material that was submitted, but we had been waiting quite a while for the last response. And again, we did just receive it, you know, late last week and unfortunately, there wasn't sufficient time to, you know, to reply in the detail that they're looking for. So, when is the next meeting?
The next meeting, I believe, would be Tuesday, November 24th, the week of Thanksgiving.
Well, if, you know, if that's the way you want us to proceed, then certainly we would request a continuance to the 24th.
Yeah, because if we discuss this, if we have a point by point by point tonight through the whole thing.
That we could work to the planning department with Graves to try and get a response back and then have an opportunity, I guess, for them to review the response and then hopefully generate some sort of a further report based on the information provided, you know, with sufficient time to get it back for the meeting on the 24th.
Well, you know.
So, I would request that we continue the meeting to the 24th and look to, you know, follow the direction that you've given us.
Okay, just so you know, whether or not we went through this point by point by point tonight or not, it still has to go to Graves, so that's a given. So, we would always our time going through that and it's got to go to Graves anyway. So, I think it would behoove you to actually talk to somebody at Graves, like the guy who reviewed it and signed it, and maybe get on the same page with certain things on the design. So, their response may be quicker if you communicate with them. I don't know if they'd be willing to do that, but it's worth a phone call.
Sure. No, I think that's a good suggestion and I would hope that we can do that and, you know, kind of speed things up a little bit in that regard.
Very good. So, could I have a motion to continue this to the next meeting on November 24th of this month?
John, I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
Ron, it's Nick.
I'll take Ron in second. All those in favor, please respond with aye. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers? Myself, John Regan, as an aye, it is a vote. Moving on to other business discussion.
Thank you very much.
Pardon me?
No, I just said, "Thank you very much."
Oh, you're welcome. Moving on to other business discussion, the reserve at Ashworth Hills Subdivision requests for extension. Can you clue this in on that, Adam?
Sure. I'm not sure if you've been up that way recently. They're going, getting buses working on the roadway. They have one of the duplex that was released a couple of months ago, is half-built. Their initial decision from three years ago gave them a deadline to complete the work. They're just asking for an extension for another couple of, three years so they can finish the work essentially. So they're certainly working, and like I said, the 40B, which is not part of this, but adjacent to it, is likely to be under construction once that decision is approved by the ZBA in the near future. So I think it's a kind of a common sense ask to extend their decision.
Anybody from the board have any comments before I give you mine? Ron, do you have any comments?
I just wanted to ask, Adam?
Yeah.
So for three years, they're not going to come, they're not going to be doing anything? They won't be coming back to us for any of the 40B or anything like that?
The 40B, no, that's strictly ZBA. That planning board has no authority over that particular aspect. The subdivision, right now, there's only been one of the lots that's been released to be built. They'll have to come back presumably, I'm guessing here, in the spring to start working on those. They're still working on the roadway. I'm not sure exactly where they are on the roadway, but the road has to be built to a certain extent to, for the lots can be released. They'll have to come back to the subdivision for at least that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do you have any comments, Nick?
Not at the time.
Steve, do you have any comments?
Just wondering why three years if they're making good progress now? Is there plan delays on everything else?
John, I'm going to hazard an educated guess here because there's going to be a lot of construction surrounding the 40B and a lot of impact on the roadway. The town wouldn't accept the roadway until, you know, that they're going to make sure that the roadway is not going to be impacted by those vehicles working on the 40B. So my guess is that they're going to wait, they want to give it three years to do all the construction up there before they walk away from it and be done with all the construction. That's just a guess. I don't have a real answer, but that's just my assumption.
Anything else, Steve?
I'm all set. Thank you.
My question is, they've been there for three years, and I know they were having trouble with the 40B, but I don't understand why the rest of the subdivision isn't done. I mean, three years is a long time, and you want another three-year extension. Personally, I would think one to two years at a time instead of three would be more palatable for everybody. Does anybody have any comment on that on the board?
No, no, I mean, I'd agree with you with, maybe we should set it at two years or one to two years. And then let them come back for another request if they're not ready to start or finish.
Anything else?
John, I think, I think two years is probably enough time to at least see where they're at. The three years already has been good, but to leave it open for three seems excessive. I think Adam's comments do lean towards probably needing more time, but I'd like them to come back if that's the case.
I mean, that way they'd have to justify what's taken so long.
Agreed.
Nick, do you have any comments?
No, I mean, I'll take, you know, I think Adam's, you know, point is probably that they're probably just trying to be conservative on time, which is why they're probably, or not conservative, but, you know, kind of liberalized as far as time goes. So, but restricting them kind of makes it move quicker, I guess. And then, you know, we just go to another extension later on if need be, I guess. So, no, I don't have any other comments other than that.
One of the reasons for me is they're working right next to a neighborhood, and the neighborhood's put up with them for three years already. And we just give them a car block, three more years, and I hate to see the downfall from that. So I think two years is plenty, and if they got to come back and need a year and they've made great progress, then I probably don't see a problem approving an additional year at the end. But I think two years is apropos for this. Do I have a motion to approve the extension for a two-year time limit? Nick, could I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second?
I'll second it.
Steve Chambers, second.
All those in favor? Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan is an aye, it is a vote. Moving on to meeting minutes of 10/13/2020, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion. This is Nick.
Steve Chambers, I'll make that motion.
Second, Steve? Nick made the motion, Steve.
Steve Chambers, second.
Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan is an aye, it is a vote. I don't have any, well, I do have one more thing to discuss, but I'd rather move on to the member town planner update.
It's not a whole lot to update. There's a couple of projects that might be in the pipeline, but they're very preliminary at this point, until the DCG next week. I'm not sure if I told the board, we received, the town received MVP grant a couple of weeks ago. It's for, the total project is about $300,000 for the project. The cash amount's about $200,000, $215,000. It's to continue working on the Stewart Street culvert replacement. There's going to be some engineering aspects of it. And also part of it is an education piece with Leesville Pond. Many of the residents, businesses surrounding Leesville Pond, both in Auburn and Worcester, to try to educate them on how to clean up their waterways. So it's kind of a big project that's been kicking off for me anyways.
Excellent. Speaking of meetings, the third meeting from tonight would wind up on December 22nd. And we usually don't meet the week of Christmas. So we could push this to the following week, right after New Year's or the following week after that. And we can discuss this next meeting, but I just wanted to put it in everybody's head to think about it and where it may fit best in everybody's schedule, seeing as the holidays are coming up.
Great.
Okay, a motion to adjourn. Next meeting is 11/24/2020.
Ronnie Brooks, John, I'll make the motion to adjourn.
May I have a second?
This is Nick. I'll second. This is Nick. I'll second it.
All those in favor, Steve Chambers?
Aye.
Ron Brooks?
Aye.
Nicholas Lynch?
Aye.
Myself, John Regan is an aye. Meeting is now adjourned.